Seems we have full attendance now. And I'm gonna call our successor agency meeting to order. And we'll start with roll call.
Member Molinari.
Here.
Vice Chairman Barajas.
Here.
Member Romero.
Here.
Member Cortez.
Here.
And Chairman Hagenian.
And I'm here. Thank you. And at this time, we'll move to statement of public oral communications.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman and members of the successor agency, members of the public interested in addressing the successor agency on any agenda item or topic must fill out a form provided at the door and turn in prior to the beginning of oral communications. A form does not need to be filled out and submitted for public hearing items. This also includes a request for public oral communications on items listed for closed session prior to the agency recessing into closed session. Speakers wishing to address successor agency on an item that is not on the agenda will be called upon in the order that their speaker card was received. Those persons not accommodated during this first 30-minute period will have an opportunity to speak under oral communications continued. Be aware of the maximum time allotted for individuals to speak, shall not exceed three minutes per speaker. In accordance with state law, the successor agency may not take action or entertain extended discussion on a topic not listed on the agenda. Show courtesy to others and direct all your comments to the Chair. Do we have any cards for successor agency? We do not. At this time, if I may announce the one item for closed session for successor agency. And this is conference with real property negotiators, the property listed at 132 South Sixth Street, 114 through 116, 121 and 124 South Sixth Street as posted on the agenda. And then it would be appropriate to call to order the meeting of the Montebello City Council.
Okay, at this time, I'll call order of the Montebello City Council meeting. And I'll ask for a roll call.
Councilmember Molinari.
Here.
Mayor Pat Tim Barajas.
Here.
Councilmember Romero.
Here.
Councilmember Cortez.
Here.
And Mayor Hagenian.
And I'm here. And now, we'll move to statement of public oral communication.
Thank you. Members of the public interested in addressing the city council on closed session items must fill out a card at this time. Maximum time allotted for individual speech shall not exceed three minutes per speaker. Show courtesy to others and direct all your comments to the Mayor. Do we have any cards for closed session for city council? We do not. We do have three items under conference with, I'm sorry, under closed session. One is conference with real property negotiators, the property located at Hollowfield Park. Two is the conference with labor negotiators, the Montebello Police Management Association. And third is public employment for the position of Fire Chief and Director of Human Resources. It is appropriate at this time, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Chairman, to recess into closed session.
Okay, at this time, we'll move to closed session. And we will convene back here at 6:30.
What point in the meeting do the commissioners come up?
What time?
Oh, the kids? I don't know.
And I also want to thank the community for being so patient as we had a number of closed item matters to discuss that took quite amount of time. But now, we're back. And I will ask our city attorney to make his report.
Thank you very much. Let me start with the successor agency, Mr. Chairman. The record should reflect that the successor agency convened in closed session for discussion of the one item under conference with real property negotiators, the various properties that were listed on the agenda. The record should further reflect that all five members of the successor agency were present. A presentation was made by the agency's negotiator with respect to the terms of sale of these properties. Direction was provided to the agency's negotiator, but there was no final action taken. And there is nothing further to report. This matter will come back to you in the very near future for open session consideration. It now becomes appropriate to adjourn the successor agency meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we will adjourn our successor agency meeting.
And then moving on to the city council closed session, the record should reflect that the city council convened for closed session with all five members being present. The following items that were announced for discussion in closed session were discussed. And the following is my report. Under conference with real property negotiators, that matter was presented to the city council. There was direction provided, and there was no final action taken, however, and nothing further to report. Under conference with labor negotiators, the various employee groups that were listed on the agenda were discussed. Direction was provided to the agency negotiator. This matter will come back to you if final terms are reached with the various employee groups. But since there was no final action taken, there's also nothing further to report on this matter. Finally, the public employment matters. The city council received a briefing on these two items, and there was no action taken and nothing further to report. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report from closed session. It is appropriate to continue with the open portion of the meeting.
Okay, thank you for that report. And now, I will call our city council meeting to order. And again, I can't stress enough how appreciative our city council is of the public's patience as we went well over our allotted time to, or scheduled time, rather, to discuss closed session matters. And if you will, please join Father Francisco Sandoval from St. Benedict's Church to lead the invocation.
Thank you, everyone, and good evening. And it is a pleasure for me to be here. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen, let us pray. Lord our God, look with love on the people of this community and keep them safe in your service. Guide the members of this council and help them to work together for the good of all. Bless their plans and deliberations and bring them to success. Father, we ask this grace through our Lord Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you, Father. And as a tradition that I started to have the youngest member of the audience lead the Pledge of Allegiance, I'm not quite sure, based on judging a book by its cover, who's the youngest, but I see Commissioner Rick Clement here who has a baby face. I'm gonna ask him to come on up and lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clement. We will now move on to the presentation portion of our city council meeting. And with us today, we have a very special guest from Independent Cities Association. As you all know, Montebello is a member of Independent Cities Association. And in the past, we've actually had members of the council who have served as president. And we have a member of this current council who, on Thursday, will be installed as a vice president. She climbed the ladder quite fast, if you ask me, Councilwoman Romero. But we're very proud that she represents Montebello so well. But with us, we have the current president. We have Marie Fellauer. And we have Trish that's over here. Trish, your last name is almost as challenging as people pronouncing my last name. So...
It's P-Trac.
P-Trac, yeah, I always say, I always get it wrong. Welcome, both of you. And council member, you are free to make your presentation now.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am Marie Fellauer. I'm a council member in the city of El Segundo. And as of tomorrow evening around this time, I will be the President of Independent Cities Association, which represents 43 cities across LA County and almost 8 million people. Thank you, Mayor Hagenian, for allowing us to be put on the agenda for this evening. It's always a pleasure seeing you and some of your colleagues at our conferences. I wanted to go over kind of some of the things that ICA does and let you know that with me coming in as a new president and our current executive board coming in, we are breathing new life into the organization. Vivian Romero will be our vice president, as you indicated. And we have a group of people now where the synergy is amazing, and we're doing some really exciting things.
Closer to the mic.
We're doing some really exciting things this upcoming year. So, in terms of legislative advocacy, we serve over 8 million people. So, we have a strong collaborative voice for local governments, and together, we make positive change on issues affecting local municipalities and communities. Our goal this year is to be more visible. We will host at least two press conferences addressing issues faced by our cities. The next press conference will be this coming October, and we will discuss Assembly Bill 109, which is the realignment, and Prop 47, along with the bill that just got passed yesterday for, I'm losing my train of thought, asset forfeiture. We will be addressing that as well. And any other issues that Montebello or any other cities want to have addressed, you can always feel free to go through Vivian or contact Trish P-Trac or myself. We will be issuing press releases quarterly regarding ICA's positions and member cities' positions on issues. We will be linking efforts with other organizations and form strategic alliances with them, such as Contract Cities. In fact, yesterday, we had a great meeting with Contract Cities, and we will be joining them in their efforts up in Sacramento in January for their legislative event, which is rather large. We will be lobbying our Board of Supervisors here in the county of LA on a monthly basis. And in the past, we maybe haven't done as much as we could have, but what we want to do this coming year is not just take position on issues either for or against in Sacramento, but we also want to influence the language to certain bills. So, that is definitely something we will be working on. And I also wanted to make it clear to you that we have a full-time, ICA has a full-time legislative consultant in Sacramento that is available to Montebello and any of our city members to use at any time. So, if he, his name is Tony Rice, he's with Rice Englander and Associates. And he's available, he's at your beck and call. So, if you need something, you can always reach out to him. Vivian, myself, and Trish can always get you that information if needed. This last year, we spoke on, we took positions, as ICA, we took positions on water, realignment, which is AB 109, redevelopment, and medical marijuana. And particularly with medical marijuana, we wanted local control, which is what we consistently advocate for. We also, this coming year, myself and the executive board have decided to move forward with developing a city manager task force. So, they will, this group will be charged with executing directives, working with our legislative consultant, and reporting to the Board of Directors. So, ICA will develop common positions for member cities in labor negotiations, share resources, and provide a clearinghouse for consultants, vendors, et cetera. In terms of education, ICA has always historically been very good at education, but we're actually going to do more this year and hopefully only increase that in coming years. We're leaders in education for local government. We provide educational opportunities for elected officials, public safety personnel, decision-makers, and city staff, including professional development and technical training. In addition to our two seminars a year, which is our winter seminar and our summer seminar, our winter seminars up in Santa Barbara and our summer seminars down in San Diego, we are going to initiate six educational series meetings this year. Our first topic for November will be homelessness in our communities. And those will be lunchtime seminars, open to any and all of you and all of our member cities and their staff, and anyone else that would want to come. We are also going to initiate an educational component for our Board of Directors' meetings on a monthly basis. This is something I feel strongly about. Our Board of Directors will be bringing in people from their cities to speak on issues that they've addressed or had issues with and lessons that they've learned. And hopefully, we can all have takeaways from the Board of Directors' meetings from that as well. Our website will become a, it is becoming, a hub for legislative knowledge for Southern California cities. I don't know if you've checked it out before, but it can be found at www.icacities.org. So, with that, we want to sincerely thank the city of Montebello for your membership in ICA, for your consistent commitment to ICA, and particularly to our esteemed colleague, Councilmember Vivian Romero. She is our incoming vice president tomorrow evening and will be our president-elect for the second half of the year because our president-elect will be termed out in his city during this year. Councilmember Romero and your city manager, Francesca Schuler, attended, not just attended, that's an understatement, they were instrumental in our meetings in Sacramento this year with several legislators. And we are grateful for their time and their efforts up there with us. ICA is here to work for Montebello. So, I genuinely extend a hand and ask for your input whenever you need it from us. And you have my commitment as the ICA president to be there and be responsive and responsible for whatever you ask us to do. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, President Councilmember Fellauer.
And Sergeant.
And Sergeant, of course. I didn't know if I, I'm not sure if you want us to disclose that you're an LAPD Sergeant, but we're very proud of you. And we thank you for taking the helm of ICA. And I just want to forewarn you that you have a ball of fire as your vice president on your board.
And that's why we love you.
And should be doing some good work together. Yeah, thank you, thank you. Are there any questions from the board or from the council, whether?
I don't have a question, but I just want to say that it's been such an honor and such a pleasure working with you and with Trish. And I'm very excited in the future of ICA. And I'm honored that I'll be a part of the executive board as the vice president tomorrow, if anybody would like to come. That installation dinner is in El Segundo, and we can provide the address.
If you go to our website, www.icacities.org, the information is there. You can also contact Trish P-Trac. What's your, do you want to come up and?
It's all on the website.
It's all on the website.
And I'm very excited about our joint strategic alliance with Contract Cities and all of the people that showed up yesterday for the luncheon. It was super productive, which is gonna help both jointly, both organizations. And I am very happy that we get to utilize Tony Rice for legislation in Sacramento. And Montebello has benefited greatly from Independent Cities Association. So, I want to present you for your baby boy, a little gift that she's adopting.
We're adopting a baby, and he's due to be born on September 21st, but he could come any day now, so.
Oh, God bless.
If you wouldn't mind, just for the public's edification, so that they understand what Independent Cities is and what makes us different from Contract Cities, is that Independent Cities are cities who have one or the other or both their own fire or their own police department. And that's, that kind of sets us apart from Contract Cities in terms of public safety. And being such a large budget item, it's a really important issue. And so, we focus a lot of efforts on public safety, but as I talked about in my presentation, we also go outside of that. So, there is a lot of crossover, and that's why we're looking to partner with Contract Cities.
Well, thank you. And it's interesting you brought that up because we are both an independent city and a Contract City. We belong to both organizations. And for the public's edification, we actually have our own police department, but we contract our homicide investigations and our air support with the Sheriff's Department.
That's the same as El Segundo.
Yeah. So, again, thank you. And I just want to ask on the record that there was a rumor that the convention was gonna be relocated, the summer location, the convention?
Yes. I don't know the name off the top of my head. I'm sure she does. Trish.
We are in negotiations with Aviara Resort in Carlsbad.
Okay.
It's five-star, five diamond. I think you'll be happy.
Thank you. And again, thank you for collaborating with Contract Cities because a bigger voice is a stronger voice.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
Thank you, Vivian.
Okay, so now, we'll move to public oral communications on open session items. I'm sorry, statement of public oral communications.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Members of the public interested in addressing the city council on any agenda item or topic must fill out a form provided at the door and turn in to the city clerk prior to the beginning of oral communications. A form does not need to be submitted for public hearing items. We have no public hearing items this evening. Speakers addressing to, speakers wishing to address the city council on an item that is not on the agenda will be called upon in the order that their speaker card was received. Those persons not accommodated during this first 30-minute period will have an opportunity to speak under oral communications continued. Be aware of the maximum time allotted for individual speech shall not exceed three minutes. Be aware that in accordance with state law, the city council may not take action or entertain extended discussion on a topic not listed on the agenda. Show courtesy to others and direct all of your comments to the Mayor. We do have several cards on public communications and several cards on items on the agenda.
Okay, first speaker is Yvette Fimbres.
Good evening, council and staff. Our nation suffered a great loss on September 11th, 2011. Let me repeat myself. I said September 11th. Montebello has had an annual remembrance each year on September 11th, with exception of the initial tragedy that occurred on September 11th, 2001, in which the first candlelight vigil was held at City Park on September 12th, 2001. There has been some debate whether this has always been a city-sponsored or private event. Regardless, it has always been coordinated by Lieutenant Ray Rodriguez and the pastoral staff of Praised Chapel. However, this year, as Lieutenant Ray Rodriguez was planning for this event to be held on September 11th, he was contacted and advised by the Mayor, Jack Hagenian, that the city event was moved to Thursday, September 10th. Hagenian, let's see, Hagenian's rationale was that the city does not work on Fridays. Sorry that the date inconveniently fell on a Friday this year, but I don't think it was a surprise. City council should also rethink this Monday through Thursday work week. Really, how does it benefit us who live in the Montebello to have city staff that works only Monday through Thursday? How is it that no one can figure out a way to adjust employee schedules? Ms. Skylar, it's apparent that it's almost impossible for you to enjoy a hard-earned vacation without the city going kapui in your absence. Lieutenant Ray Rodriguez, upset and angered by this news, rallied the support of several community members and veterans who agreed that they would file a permit with the city of Montebello to hold the event separate from the cities and remember those who lost their lives on September 11th. Now, I understand, after the dismay from constituents and it being an election year, the city is now able to have the event on September 11th and canceled Lieutenant Ray Rodriguez's September 11th effort and planning. City staff met with Lieutenant Rodriguez and told him it will be leading and taking charge of the September 11th remembrance on September 11th. Lieutenant Ray Rodriguez's role was minimized in the coordination of this event. Lieutenant Rodriguez had rallied and asked several community organizations and members for their participation and even scheduled former Sheriff Libaca to guest-speak. What a slap in the face to Lieutenant Ray Rodriguez, who has only donated and volunteered his time and resources to this community for many, many, many years. I am disgusted by the lack of respect for Lieutenant Ray Rodriguez, his group killed-in-action, veterans, first responders, and the community. This date has significance to me, my family, and my, and many other residents, veterans, and first responders here in Montebello. Many of us personally suffered a loss as a result of the horrific event that took place on September 11th and have a number of family members who are public safety personnel and have served this country.
Thank you for your concern, and, Ms. Fimbres, but the statement that you make is completely untrue and no facts. So, what I'm gonna do for the record is I was never the one...
You did contact Lieutenant Ray Rodriguez and told him it was canceled.
Excuse me, your time, your time is up. I never contacted Mr. Rodriguez. That story is made up. In fact, I had nothing to do with the planning of September 10 or September 11. And the city manager and the police chief will be very happy to state the record as to what did take place.
Oh, boy, you really, that's a lie. Oh, wow, wow, wow.
Mayor, if I may...
You did contact him and told him.
No, that's not what happened. So, who would like to state the, or clarify the story on the record? Because that is not true. That is not what happened.
Yes. The city manager will take the microphone at this time. What happens in human communications, sometimes there is a breakdown. And I believe there was such a breakdown in this 9/11 ceremony because, I mean, there was obviously no intent to disrespect anyone in any fashion, other than maybe there was a difference in coordination and planning this year. And Chief, if you want to start, because Kevin McClure has been so gracious in helping me manage some of the recreational activities, including special events. And so, Kevin McClure, Chief, if you'd like to add?
Well, let me start with, the recommendation to be done on September 10th came from me. Nobody else but me. That was my recommendation that it be on September 10th. And if you want to talk about staffing and not being able to how to figure out how to staff...
Chief, ma'am, you cannot speak from the audience. You'll be asked to leave, so please refer, retain your comments to yourself. If you would like to step out, you can say whatever you'd like outside of these chambers. Is that clear? Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Chief, sorry to interrupt.
With our limited staffing that we have, both in the police department and in Parks and Rec, who I have been doing a great, spending a great deal of time working in that, at Parks and Rec, between National Night Out in August, which required maximum deployment of my police department, and the parade event in October, which required all days off to be canceled by the police department, in order to cancel days off again in September, created an overtime nightmare for the police department. Not to mention that it would have been an overtime cost on the employees of Parks and Rec. So, for anybody to say that that came from anybody but me, anybody can come talk to me, I did that. After I conferred with some folks, there were definitely some people who thought it would be better to do it on September 11th. I did not have the resources to do it. I met with Chief Hebert and discussed it. He was gracious enough to take on the event, to ensure that it occurred on the 11th. There would have been a very, very good event for this city. In fact, I had canceled speakers, a great deal of stuff that had already been coordinated for the September 10th event. And I will guarantee you that the event that was done on September 10th would have made this city proud. Now, if you want to talk about who's dealt with September 11th and how much it means, I've been in law enforcement for 35 years. I think I know the loss of law enforcement and public safety people as well or better than anybody in this room. So, if anybody wants to question my loyalty to the loss of people, I'd be more than happy to have that conversation with you. So, that's how it came about. Chief Hebert and I were able to discuss it. He felt he had the resources to put it on on September 11th. So, that is why it is occurring on that particular day.
Thank you, Chief. And, you know, I'm originally from New York City, so 9/11 is special to my heart because I have family who suffered during that tragedy. Be that as it may, for the past several years, every September 11th, we've always tried to work together with our community groups to put on a special memorial. This year, yes, as Kevin McClure stated, we consulted with the Fire Chief. Fire Chief is retiring very soon. And so, this was a special year for him. And so, the Fire Chief and the Fire Association stepped in and said, "Let's make this a very memorable event." And then, so the Fire Chief, Chief Hebert, planned the 9/11. planned the nine-eleven in conjunction with the City Manager and Ray Rodriguez and Praise Chapel. So Chief Hebert, if you'd like to give us an update, because I know you met with Mr. Rodriguez even yesterday.
Yes, ma'am. Just, we had a meeting yesterday morning to finalize the arrangements for the ceremony on Friday, the eleventh. We have been working collaboratively with Praise Chapel, as you mentioned, and with Commander Rodriguez from KIA and other groups within the community. So I believe it's still... The intent has always been a community-driven event without losing the perspective of what we're there to memorialize the public safety personnel that gave all on that day and to remember our men and women in Armed Forces that continue to serve our country and our police and fire departments as well. So I believe we've... We'll have a beautiful event to memorialize the day. And we have been working collectively together.
So, yes, it will take place on September eleventh, four forty-five, on Whittier and Sixth and Tenth, where the march will start. Yes, we cannot have horses and cars like in the past because of constraints. But we will march to City Park, and we have a guest speaker and a high school student that will be singing the National Anthem. Oh, an individual. And we have a keynote speaker from Fire. And it'll be a beautiful memorable event.
Okay, thank you for that. Next speaker is Sandra Martinez. It looks like Sandra Martinez is not here. So then we'll move to... Is this Mano Franco? Maria, sorry. It looks like an N. My apologies. Please.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Maria Barragan. I live at seven forty-nine Davis. And I'm here to ask that the city do something about so many posters and signs and advertisements that are just appearing on the south side where I live. It's just excessively. It just seems like an advertisement city. Especially like on the south side, like I said. I've contacted Code Enforcement and Public Works, and all I get is that they don't have the manpower to come out and remove all these posters. But if you just go down there and walk, it's just excessively neon posters and writing saying, "We'll buy ugly houses. We'll buy mobile homes. We'll lend you money." It's just excessively. It's just too much. It's important that our city be maintained all around, not just in certain parts of the city. I'd also like to request that the city website also be updated with current activities. I've gone to other cities and I noticed their websites are full of information of all the events that are happening from now until New Year's. And I noticed that our city doesn't have much. And, you know, I think we could do a lot. I mean, we do a lot, but it's not there. People know what we're doing. And one last thing is, can we start on time? It's really hard, you know, to be here all night, have to get a babysitter for my baby, and I'd really like to start coming to these meetings, but they don't start on time.
That's why I opened up with a public apology, because we typically don't go this long. We usually start within the five to ten minutes.
Right. It's just that these past times that I've been coming, it starts like close to seven o'clock and it gets really late.
We're sorry about that.
Thank you so much.
But thank you for being active and addressing concerns. And I'm gonna ask our Public Works Director, Danilo Batson, if you can please connect with her and see how you can address the concern that's been raised.
And also, we're in the process of updating the city's website. It's being designed so that it'll be user-friendly and will be mobile accessible. So you will... It'll be better for everyone.
Can I also contact a gentleman? I don't know if he told you that I talked to him. I think he was in charge of updating the website last night. I forgot his name, but...
David.
Did that mean he tells you about it?
Okay, we'll keep in touch, yeah. All right.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tila Gregorian. Tila Gregorian? Okay. So make sure you heard.
Tila Gregorian, one zero zero one Hibiscus Street, Montebello, California. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, city staff, and our Police Chief and our Fire Chief, and of course, our residents. I am here once again with a very negative attitude, and I'm really very tired of it. I would love to be able to come up here and be so positive about our city, but it seems like so much is happening that is just so negative. And I just don't like seeing this happen in my city. It seems like we take one step forward and two steps back, and it's just getting to be a little too much for me, I know, and my neighbors. Because we sit and we discuss these issues that happen in our city. And I'm gonna start with one. The first one, from last City Council meeting, there was a presentation that was made here to thank the Firemen and the police for the fire, which was appropriate. The only thing is that I found very inappropriate is that one of the candidates was in that video, one of the persons that's running for council. And I felt like, is this all it needed was to say, "Vote for me." And I felt that this was standing such poor taste in that the City Council or the city approved it and okayed it because in the past, it's been very difficult to show any kind of videos in the diocese here when we have our City Council meetings. So I found it in very poor taste and that I am very disappointed that you allowed that to happen. And then the other thing is that last Council meeting also, it was brought to my attention that this newspaper disappeared from the back racks. They were thrown in the trash cans. No one could find them in the regular trash can, so I says, "Maybe in the women's trash can." So I went and I looked in the women's trash can, and there was this newspaper. Do we not have freedom of the press in our city now? I mean, it's the censorship that's happening in our city. We are a democracy in a city, I keep reminding you folks. And for some reason, for something, this is high school stuff. Not even high school stuff. Even high schools people, children have better sense than to take something away that's been put back there here in our city hall so that people can come in and pick up this information. To destroy or to throw away a city... To throw away the city newspaper, to me, is really, really, very ugly. I had some more things to say, but I don't think you'll be very happy with what else I have to say. So I hope you put a stop to this nonsense and ask, I know who did it, but I hope that those that are aware of it will ask them to stop. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Gregorian. I do want to speak... I do want to answer one of the points brought up about the video that was displayed that ended up becoming a political advertisement. I, for one, was unaware of the material in that video. We thought it was basically a tribute to the Fire Department, but it was more of a political campaign-related item. However, we will no longer allow people to bring anything to display before it's been viewed by our legal counsel to prevent improprieties of such to happen again. Mr. Attorney, did you want to speak on that item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. Actually, public comment is intended to be comments from the audience at the podium here. In fact, anything that is attempted to be turned into city staff to be displayed will not be displayed. So the public comment is, there is a very opportunity for someone to come forward and express their views, just like the last speakers have. But an attempt to offer a zip drive or videotape or something for display, that's just not gonna happen, especially during election season.
Thank you for that. And now we move to our next item, which is staff communication. So I'll defer to our City Manager.
Well, we were gonna announce September eleventh ceremony. So Chief Hebert, if you want to grace us with the specifics one more time, because we do want... We invite all of you to come out, so...
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Skylar. So as we've briefly touched on already, we are planning for our nine-eleven memorial to take place on Friday, the eleventh. The presentation will kick off at five o'clock at City Park. But prior to that, at four forty-five, we'll be convening at Whittier and Tenth Street for the march to City Park. So we invite all the community to participate in the walk if they like. If not, we hope to see you at City Park at five o'clock.
Hey, I just... Chief Hebert and I are the only ones that have been around since day one on this. But it is a very, very important event, and I'm proud of our community because for fourteen years, we have continued to honor those that lost their lives in nine-eleven. And that's something that we certainly is just as valid today as it was then. Unfortunately, terrorism and the type of event that can occur again are very important. Our vigilance, our preparedness is very important, but more of the debt we owe to the first responders, police, and fire that are the ones that are on the front lines of keeping not only our communities, but in this case, our country safe. So for all of you, I think it's something to support and attend if you're able. It's a very important program. It's something that I think is very memorable. Ray Rodriguez has all of the color guards from all of the military units and law enforcement units will be participating in the march. And it's mostly young people that are learning the lessons of importance of defending our democracy. So for all of you that are in the council chambers and are watching this program, please try to attend because I think you'll find it very rewarding and certainly something that we need to continue to participate in and to remember the events that took place on that day because it is not something, unfortunately, in past history, it's something that can occur and is occurring even today.
Yeah, exactly. I think there isn't a single person here who doesn't appreciate the sensitivity and the significance of what nine-eleven means to all Americans. And I, for one, can't seem to get the memory out of my head of watching the second attack live on television. That was awful. And anyhow, I'm glad that we were able to clarify that matter. Is there anything else you wanted to announce?
Yes, our Public Works Director, Mr. Batson, has an announcement.
Yes, we would like to invite the community to come out on Saturday, September nineteenth. We'll have the Art Walk and Go Green Event at City Park between twelve PM and six. There will be... Many of the local artists will be displaying their craft and also will have information to share with the community about recycling and diversion.
And performance by the Wise Guys?
Yes, we... Yes, the boys will be performing from three to four on that Saturday.
Three to four.
Certainly, that event's a great event. With Randy last year, we spearheaded that event, and it was phenomenal last year. This year, we're expecting it to be even bigger than last year. So this year, we're looking forward to having all the artists out there, certainly the whole community come out. And also, like Danilo said, do the Go Green Event as well. But definitely, the Wise Guys are gonna add a little added entertainment there with the performance from three to four on Saturday evening. So hopefully, Saturday afternoon, I should say, and look forward to seeing all of you there.
And hopefully, it'll be cooler. Yeah, there you go. And I would like to just say, Mr. Mayor, too, how important it is to me. I was in New York, in Manhattan, on nine-eleven on business. And I will never, ever forget that day, being stuck there for weeks, couldn't get out of New York, and the devastation to see it firsthand with my own eyes and smell it. And just the devastation was incredible. And it is very important that we do do it on that day. So I echo those sentiments. Okay, that's it. Thank you. Those are the announcements?
Okay, so now we will move to approval of agenda.
Any item Councilmember wishes to discuss should be designated at this time. All other items may be approved in a single motion, with the exception of any item upon which a member of the public or a member of the City Council is requested to speak. Such approval will also waive the reading of any ordinance. We do have public requests on item number seventeen. And also, Councilor was later on, which is item twenty-four. I'll poll the council, and as I understand, that on item fourteen, Councilmember Cortez will not be participating in that matter. If it is not pulled by any other Councilmember for separate discussion, then we will just note her nonparticipation on that matter. Item... Okay, so polling the council, Councilmember Molinari, any items?
Yes, thank you. I have no additional items, but on item number twenty, the warrant register I will be abstaining on check number five six two nine five five. That's a law firm that's representing me in a matter of a claim filed by Garfunkel Financial Corporation, which have no conflict with the city.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Barajas.
I have no additional items.
Councilmember Romero.
I have none.
Councilmember Cortez.
I have none.
And Mayor Higinian.
I have none.
Then, it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to approve the agenda, with the exception of item number seventeen. Do you need a motion of that effect?
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, if there's no opposition, that's so ordered.
And then, if I may, just make sure it's clear on the record that item number fourteen, Councilmember Cortez did not participate on the vote on that matter inasmuch as she has property within five hundred feet of that matter. And then also, on item number twenty, that Councilmember Molinari did not vote on the approval of that one warrant. Then we move on to item seventeen. Item seventeen is the Latino Heritage Matter.
Yeah, before we get to the speakers, I wanted to, since we didn't discuss the item, I wanted to ask... First, I wanted to introduce Jerry Bonuelos from the Lions Club, who was here today to accept the surplus vehicle. And if all other Lions Club members are present, to stand for a moment. We wanna... I don't understand why Mayor Protem didn't stand up, because he is a lion.
Oh, was he someone to die?
It's okay, you're...
It's our City Manager, so I don't wanna...
But I just...
I am a proud Montebello lion, yes, along with our City Manager.
I want to take this opportunity to thank you for all the work you do in the community. You do play a big part in promoting community pride in Montebello. So thank you for that, and good luck with this vehicle. And now we'll proceed back with the agenda. But again, thank you for being here and for accepting the item.
Your Honor, if I may, on behalf of my fellow Lions, I really want to thank the city and our city administrator and our Fire Chief for certainly donating this. This will definitely be... We will put it to good use. As you all know, as you see, Lion Jerry, Lion Alida, and Lion Rick are here. And this vehicle will be used throughout the year for different promotional events that the Lions Club does, such as when we go do the... On Christmas Eve, when we adopt the family, in which we bring every family member... Huh? Well, yes, thank you, Lion President. The first thing we're gonna be doing is going to be the parade, the Montebello Parade. We're gonna go ahead and break it in there, and so we'll use it for that. And also, like I was mentioning, we would also use it again, for example, for Adopt a Family, in which we go cruise the City of Montebello first and have fun on it, along with a little caravan. And then we end up at the home of the family that we adopt and deliver Christmas presents and Christmas dinner. So it's a wonderful, wonderful organization. It's been my pleasure to be a part of it since nineteen ninety-eight and certainly been able to have good friends like Jerry, Alida, and Rick. So on behalf of the club, I want to thank the City of Montebello and also, again, our City Manager and our Fire Chief. So thank you very much.
And great thanks to Chief Hebert for approving and agreeing to the donation. So thank you. At first, I said, "Well, where are they gonna park it?" Uh-oh. There you go. Thank you. We don't want Code Enforcement out. Yeah, it's too visible.
He's got a pretty big backyard.
I had a feeling it would end up at Rick Clement's address. Anyways, next is Jaclyn Carr on item number... I had a feeling it would end up at, uh, Rick Clement's address. Anyways, uh, next is, uh, Jaclyn Carr on item number, uh, seventeen.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, Jaclyn Carr, thirty-five, twenty-one, West Via Corona, Montebello. I don't know if my coming up here regarding this item should be discussed at this time. Because in the item, it didn't mention anything about the previous information that Susie Chavez, that Susie Chavez gave, uh, when she was asking for help with doing dysfunction. And, uh, she mentioned at that time that she was working with the, um, the Unified School District. So, um, due to the fact that I lived down the street where the, she mentioned it was gonna be done at Eastmont, uh, I went to Eastmont and found out that nothing was going to happen about that. That that item was not, uh, they didn't know anything about it. And they advised me to go and, um, go attend a Board of Educa, of Education Meeting that took place on Wednesday, September the second. So, I decided I'll go just to find out, you know, is it on, not, whatever, because I thought it was a good idea. Uh, it would be using teachers, I think, as I remember them saying, uh, to cat, to teach parents in classes in Span, in, in English. So, I went, but I got there at six-twenty, and they had changed the, the, the scheduled meeting, and it was held at six, and at seven o'clock, which was supposed to be the time that I would be there. They had the closed-door session, and they had a lot of items. So, um, I got there, and they were coming out, and so a, a nice gentleman came to me and says, uh, "We've never seen you here before." And I introduced myself, and I told him when I was there. And he says, "This is a gentleman that you are gonna wanna speak to," and I left his name back then in my other sheet, you know, but anyway. I spoke to the person that was in charge of Susie's, um, uh, intention of using the school. He told me that it wasn't gonna be taking place, uh, and that they didn't know if it was gonna be taking place. Uh, that it hadn't come to, to fruition, and certain documents or something had not been given, and it was possibly a dead issue. But that it wasn't not gonna take place. So, I, in, in turn, talking to him about the problem we have on Wednesdays on our street, which is Street Cleaning Day, I said, I told him that was the intention of why I went there to ask about this, because if you are gonna hold it, not now or in the future, if you schedule meetings with parents, don't use Wednesdays, because that's the day that we have our street cleaning. Any other day's perfect, but not on Wednesdays, 'cause it causes problems. Is my time up?
No, go ahead.
Okay, so then, he said, "Oh, no, all right, that's a good thing to do." So, he noted it, and he told me if it does happen, it probably won't happen until the next season, because there's nothing going on with it now. I said, "All right, I would like to make a statement to him that I think that it's a very good project of, to have your schoolteachers, because that's why they're there, to teach the parents how to speak English of all the children that go to the schools, and Eastmont, of, is there." I said, "Because we do have a problem, uh, of them trying to say, if we go out there and they're parked, and we ask them, 'Can you move your car because we have a street cleaning day?'" Well, we noticed that, you know, they, they seen the sign, but they don't know what it says because they don't speak English, right? So, I said, "All the way around..."
Wrap it up, please. Go ahead.
"All the way around," I said, "I'm glad I came here and voiced my opinion. I think that you, as a, a school district, should pick up on this. This is a very good thing, because we do have a lot of parents that can't read it, and I had the occasion to go through an example at that Wednesday, uh, the previous Wednesday, when, uh, um, a man parked his car in front of my house. So, very quickly, I went out there, he says, "You know, move your car down the street or something, because this is the street." He says, "Well, so what?" And I said, "Well, because you see that sign over there says, 'No Parking,' from eleven to four-thirty." He says, "And, and, and what does that, what does that have to do with me?" I says, "You're not allowed. If you park here, technically, a police officer from Montebello can come and give you a ticket for doing that." And he says, "Well, I don't care."
Okay.
So, it was attitude, attitude problem. So, I, I, I made my statement, and he says, "We're gonna consider this because you brought up a very good point." So, that's what I wanted to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is, uh, Susie Chavez.
Is there gonna be a discussion?
Did you wanna speak after, or you wanna speak now?
After.
Um, well, I probably wanna speak now, Ms. Chavez. You did put out, you did fill out a card to speak, so.
Ma'am, do you wish to speak now, or, or you're gonna pass?
Um, I guess I, I should respond to that, I guess.
Well, this is your opportunity now to speak, so.
Okay, sorry. Um, is, is it not available to speak after you have your discussion? Oh.
We may ask you questions, but this is your time.
Oh, I see, okay, okay. Well, then, uh, I'll just, uh, um, not speak, I'll just not make my comments then, after all. Uh, but I will respond. Um, as of today, um, I will definitely, uh, look into who the person is that, um, she talked to. But we are signed up for September sixteenth. I spoke with, uh, Cecilia Ramirez, the principal of the school, just today. September sixteenth at six P.M., which is a Wednesday, but it'll be in the evening, will be the first class. There is, uh, a disappointing, uh, part that we're trying to work out, and that is the class that is going to be given in Spanish. The class that's gonna be given in Spanish, um, needs to be held in a, uh, on another occasion, so that, uh, excuse me, the class in Spanish will have to be rescheduled because of conflicts between the, the consultant and, uh, some dates that the, uh, school has already submitted. But we're still negotiating for that. So, we hope very much to be able to do the class in Spanish, 'cause that was our, our goal. So, there is a class happening on the sixteenth of September, and it'll be our first one there. But I am going to go to Eastmont tomorrow, so I will definitely talk with the principal again about the concern, and see which way we can clear it up. But otherwise, you know, things are happening there, and I'm, and I'm very excited about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, did somebody pull this item?
I think, because there was a speaker card?
Uh-huh.
I think, uh, the attorney pulled it.
It was just a speaker card, ma'am.
Oh, it was a speaker card, okay. But did somebody in the council pull the item to speak? At this time?
No.
Okay.
So, do we just make a motion to approve, uh...
Uh, the, the staff recommendation uh, is to support the event, which is an ambiguous statement. Obviously, go ahead.
Mayor, if, uh, if I may, um, staff recommendation is to partner, um, during Latino Heritage Month. Uh, we are doing that presently, uh, but I've heard, um, and it, uh, a desire for additional partnership. I believe there is some, uh, there's an art event happening in October. Uh, staff recommendation is, uh, not to exceed two thousand dollars, uh, for supplies and printing costs. Um, obviously, the city would have to get the invoice and pay the vendor directly for any expenses related to
Sure.
uh, any events. And I think, um, the art in the, in the park, right, Vicente, October seventeenth, is kinda where we're headed with the supplies.
That is the same day of the Montebello Parade, correct?
That is the day of the parade, yes, and the, uh, there's already a free booth that's been provided for the, for the committee, uh, and, uh, recommendation is to purchase some additional, uh, supplies
Sure.
for the artwork that, that will take place by the children.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to, uh, to approve staff's recommendation.
Of course, well, I had a question regard, did you wanna speak? Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I'd like to make a subsequent motion, 'cause, um, it doesn't have any dollar figure on there, as, um, Ms. Skyler just, uh, said, so can we make sure that we get consensus on the, uh, on the amount? I just realized that it didn't have any dollar figure.
Well, I, I think you mentioned not to exceed two thousand dollars, so...
Well, I had a, I had a, this is what I wanna talk about, because I wanna know, uh, obviously, the city supports the Latino Heritage Month celebration, obviously, in, in, in theory, and, and the significance of it, but I had, I had, uh, sponsored the, the event with, uh, Mrs. Chavez, and I met with Mrs. Chavez because wanted to make sure that, you know, if there is, when an organization is, or an entity's gonna come and ask the city for help, um, they, they need to be able to, obviously, have some kind of a plan as to what they're gonna do, what it's gonna cost. And it's, we can't just give somebody money. Uh, nobody here, including myself, is against this, but we have to be very prudent and responsible, so, um, what is it that we are paying for, and, and what we're gonna pay for? They should be submitting, uh, invoices and receipts, so we pay the, those vendors directly. So, there is no question or issue of any mishandling of funds. Not, it's not, it's not a trust issue. It's, it's, it's a matter of being responsible and prudent with, with the public's, uh, money.
Well, Your Honor, I agree with you. Uh, however, the city manager did mention that, as she was saying, that, uh, we were not to exceed two thousand dollars. On top of that, we were gonna be asking for invoices, correct?
We would be paying the vendors directly. So, for example, if there are art supplies that we would need to purchase, we would pay for it directly.
Right, uh, but obviously, you'll get an invoice, and then...
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds good. Uh, there's a, there was a motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Uh, if there's no, uh, abstentions or noes, uh, that'll be so ordered. And now we move to our next item?
Yes, Mayor, the next items are Council Orals.
I cannot believe we've got the Council Orals at eight-twenty-one P.M.
We broke the record.
This is a phenomenon. This is amazing.
Don't, don't jinx it, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please. This is the longest part of the meeting, by the way, is the Council Orals.
I'm gonna ask if I can, um, if we may, uh, go out of order, and, uh, if we can, uh, move to my, uh, item, because I would like to have, uh, everybody who's present, uh, be here for this moment, if that's okay? Mine is a very quick one. Is that fine?
Yeah, not a problem.
Okay, well, I wanted to, uh, I'm gonna, uh, step down for a minute, if you don't mind.
Get the Kleenex.
We've, we've come to a point, uh, in the city where we have to say, uh, goodbye to somebody, and there's a, there's an old, an oldie but a goodie. There's no, there's no, uh, there's nothing good in saying goodbye. And, um, and, and this, in this case, it's our, uh, Fire Chief Dominic Hubert, who is a Montebello boy. And, uh, uh, very special. Not that he's better than anybody else, but it's, it's, you know, it real, he's really, uh, cut out of the cloth of this community. Uh, a Montebello High School graduate, and we've had a lot of discussions about growing up in Montebello, and however, how he pursued a career with the Montebello Fire Department. And, uh, he had eventually made, uh, Fire Chief. And I got to speak at that ceremony when we made you the Fire Chief. And you, uh, you had, you had teary eyes, and you got choked up in your, in your speech, and that was such a clear indication of how much it meant to you to serve as Fire Chief in a city that you cared so much about. And, um, we know that, you know, your, your retirement came a little earlier than we imagined, 'cause, man, you're a young guy, and, uh, you got a lot of good years ahead of you. However, this is your decision, and your decision is one that the entire city council and staff, uh, respects. And we know that any decision you made was a good decision, and you made it in your best interest. So, we, uh, greatly, uh, respect that. Um, but what we respect more is what you've given to this city, uh, via the Fire Department, public safety. And you know, uh, Chief Hubert, if there's anybody here who can appreciate, um, good, a good Fire Department, it's me. Uh, you know, because, uh, today marks fifteen years that my grandfather passed away, and he had received a lot of service, uh, through the Fire Department, and, and then, you know, years later, my father, too. And I just wanna say how, how exceptional the service has been, and how great it is to, uh, now, you know, give back on, on the city council. But this is, this is all about you right now. This isn't about anything else. And, uh, in terms of how the city feels about you, is, it's always been good, and always in, we've always had you in a very high regard. I know that your own department looked forward to your promotion as Fire Chief. And it was a very special time. I know that Councilmember Molinari and I, we did both, uh, speak at that event, at, uh, headquarters. And, uh, we, we just wanna say thank you. Thank you for choosing to, um, for serving your professional, your professional career in Montebello. You could've gone to a lot of other places, but you want, you wanted to come back to your roots, and, and we really respect that about you. But, um, you know, I, if we had an extra fire truck, we'd, 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 we wouldn't be opposed to giving you one as a parting gift if we had an extra one laying around, but we don't have one of those, and, well, obviously, we can't do that. But that's a gesture of how we all feel about you. Uh, we all, we all like you, we all appreciate what you've done, and we respect you. You're very professional. And, um, you know, one thing I can say about you is that you have definitely been very honest about your capabilities, what you can do, what you bring to the table, and to, you know, as a Fire Chief. And we respect that. And like I said earlier, we respect any decision you made, 'cause we know it's a good decision. It's a decision you had to make for you and your family. Unfortunately, uh, we all thought you would stick around a little longer, but that's okay. So, um, I have a, a plaque, and I also have a certificate of recognition for you. And I'm going to ask my, uh, colleagues to join me as I make this, uh, presentation to you.
Yes. Over thirty-five years of service to the city of Montebello. Outgoing Chief Hubert.
So, basically, uh, Chief, Chief, when you started, uh, as a fireman in Montebello, I was, uh, actually playing with, uh, G.I. Joe's.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much.
So, we have, we have this one here?
Thank you, it's beautiful.
I also have a certificate for ya. And, uh, we, um...
Thank you so much.
I would, I'm gonna, I'm gonna open up to let my colleagues say a few words, and then eventually, you're gonna have to say a few words. So, I'll start with my, uh, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Your Honor, and, uh, Chief, uh, I, uh, what else could I say that the mayor already didn't say? I just, through the, my term here as, uh, as council member, and also as the part year that I had as serving mayor, you were one of the guys that I can fight on a lot on. And I think we found that mutual bond, because we both played drums at Montebello High School. We came out of the mob. We had Mr. Covelloni, and all that good stuff, and, uh, fellow drummer, of course. But, uh, I wish you nothing but the best. I know you're gonna be doing great, and now you're gonna have plenty more time now to play your drums, which is something that you enjoy, and, uh, we're definitely gonna miss you, but, uh, but I know we're gonna keep in touch, and I know, I know we're not, you're not going anywhere, as far as I'm concerned. You know, we'll be in touch, but, uh, but I wanna wish you all the best, and congratulations on your retirement, and, uh, and thank you for for a phenomenal job, and, and I know you started here as a fire explorer, right?
Yes.
Well, you were in high school, and then you moved up the ranks, and you ended up as chief. So, for everybody that's out there, if you can see a story that, uh, that could inspire you to become a Fire Chief, this is a perfect example. Montebello boy, born and raised here, and, uh, started as a fire explorer when, when, in high school, and then went through the ranks and became, uh, the chief. So, Chief, thank you very much, for all, for everything.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Molinari? Well, I've had the, uh, opportunity and the pleasure of working with Chief Hubert for many years, seen him come up through the ranks and get to the position of, uh, chief to our, of our department, and, uh, certainly, it's, uh, a privilege to have known him, to work with him, and seen what he's done along with all the other men and women of the Montebello Fire Department, to make it one of the outstanding fire departments in the area. to make it one of the outstanding fire departments in the area, as Mr. Janney and I had elderly parents that lived in the community, they're both gone, God bless them, but my mother particularly had a serious heart condition, she lived in the north part of the city, I live in the south, when her house, we had a caregiver for her, when she would call me, when she needed to call the paramedics and have her transported, I didn't try to go to my mother's house, I went direct to Beverly Hospital because the paramedics were there, she was in an ambulance, and on the way to Beverly before I could have driven there, so when you have that kind of personal experience, you certainly appreciate, and what the fire department does, and all of our firefighters, paramedics do for our community, and Chief, you're going to be sorely missed, it's been a pleasure of working with you over the years, and as I told the chief, nobody leaves a family except horizontally, but in his case, we made an exception because he's a good guy.
I just want to say thank you, thank you, Chief, for all of your service, and the Bible says that gray hair is a crown of glory, and I want to say you wear it very, very well. It's one of my favorite verses in the Bible, and I'm going to miss the times we prayed for the city together, as we've sat, and we have actually prayed over this city, and I am honored, honored that you are a fellow believer in the Lord with me, I'm going to miss you, and wish we could convince you to stay.
You got to convince Carolyn.
You will be missed.
Don't get me going, don't get me going.
And I'm only crying because it was only you, as a chief, that would be very personal to all of us, and when the passing of my family member happened, you made sure that I was there, and you made sure that we all knew in our family, and I really want to thank you for that, so thank you and your men for making that happen.
Thank you, God bless, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you so much, appreciate it.
If any member of the staff here would like to say a few words, including our police chief or our city manager, please do, this is a very opportune time.
Well, I'm just wondering, are you going to be driving that fire truck that was donated to the Lions on the day of the parade? On, on the day of the parade, yes or no?
I'll have to talk to Mr. Clement, I think I could, I still have my commercial license.
I see, now, it wasn't my idea, I think it was Chief McClure, right, who made the comment, and I thought, what a novel idea, how, how great it would be. Chief Hebert, I, you're a tremendous man, a man of integrity, yeah, and I know your dedicated service to this, to this community, you started in Parks and Rec? Parks and Rec, okay, and you became a firefighter, and it's just your love and devotion to this community, so that is a testimony of just your strong work ethics, and just your love for, for the citizens of Montebello, so what can I say but congratulate you, oh, but I'm a little mad because he's retiring, I really am, that's the truth, but I know you won't be gone too far, so congratulations, yeah, all right, and I think Chief McClure, you're going to say a few words?
I'll try, try to make it very quick, but those of us that live on the 24/7 clock in public safety, police and fire, we always share a very special bond, and when you're absolutely, actually the person that's having to run that 24/7 operation, you do a lot of talking to each other, and Dominic and I, he's been a great partner for me, he's been somebody that I've had the opportunity to pick up the phone and say I need to be educated, he's been here for so long, he, he's taught me so much about the, the ISIS systems and, and the different things that go on, and when you grow up here, so it'll be tough to replace him because he has been such a great friend and, and a partner, and I know what a tough decision this was for him to leave, we had that conversation many times, not going to miss him because he's going to be close enough, and like I told him a few minutes back, you will be driving that Lions Club fire truck in our October 17th parade, and he's committed to do that, he did, at least he didn't say no, so he's been a great friend, and like I said, I'm not going to say goodbye because it's not goodbye for the two of us, so anyways.
Our city attorney wants to say a few words, Arnold Glassman.
You know, I, I don't usually come up, up in this area too often, those days were done, but I know you're retiring very young because you and my wife went to high school together, and I know how young she is, so I know how... Yes, I will, but she, she's still working and you're getting to retire, it, it is indeed an honor to have been serving with you as a department director, like many people, in fact, I look up and down the council here, and those of us that grew up in Montebello, stayed in Montebello, were educated here in Montebello, and came to make this our place where we work, and I think it's a testament to, to our fire chief, I won't say retired yet because you've still got a few more days before, and as a resident of Montebello, and on behalf of my family, and just to get you, to know you as a friend, I want to say thank you for your service to our community, but most importantly, for your friendship and for your leadership as part of the management team here in Montebello, and, and we keep threatening Art that you and I, both as drummers, will have a drum off against Art, but I think those days... Yeah, it probably will, and again, Dominic, please stay in touch, this is, this is always going to be your community, and always going to be your family, thank you, Dominic.
Thank you, and did you speak yet?
Yes, I did, no. Thank you, Mayor, and the council, and first and foremost, thank you to the public, because for the last 35 years, I've had tremendous support from the public, and I've made many friends that are still here in the audience tonight, and I do appreciate it, and it's truly been an honor and a blessing to serve the community in which I grew up in, look back, many good years, but my wife and I have made that decision to look forward to many, hopefully, prayerfully, many good years ahead of us, so it, it is bittersweet to leave, but as mentioned before, it's, it's, it's a big part of my life, and I won't be fully away, so you'll be seeing me sometime in the near future, so thank you, everybody, the council, Ms. Skyler, great staff, people that I've had an opportunity to work with, thank you so much, everybody, I will miss you all, but I won't be too far away, so thank you, God bless everyone. Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to carry yourself. I will, sir, thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, council, for agreeing to move the councilorals around, now we'll, we'll go back to, as agendas, Councilmember Molinari, it's, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, you know, this is an item that has a very personal meaning to me because our son is a police officer, and unless you're a law enforcement family, you really don't understand the impact that it has when they put on that uniform and go on duty, and you have to be concerned about their safety on a daily basis, it's a very, very difficult job that our police officers, men and women in law enforcement do, I think all of us are aware that law enforcement has been under, and the entire law enforcement community has been under a very unfair and unjustified attack, especially intensifying this past year, it is so totally unfair because the allegations of police officers not being held accountable is simply totally untrue without any factual basis, I think if you really understand the standard, high standard that they're held to, most of us, I don't think would like to be, have to adhere to the standards of conduct that police officers do, I think Chief McClure, anyone in, in law enforcement would say that improper conduct on the part of a police officer is simply not tolerated, they are very quickly and severely held to accountable, like with any other profession, there certainly are going to be incidents where circumstances come up where there can be questions about whether officers handled the situation appropriately, and they are dealt with, but when you have a movement out there, and particularly this Black Lives Matter, that are now chanting these slogans publicly and being very widely disseminated within the media of killing police officers, and wanting to see cops dead because they have issues that they feel are not being fairly addressed, is totally without any justification, and unfortunately, it has cost the life of police officers, I think the incident in Texas was very clear, this is an officer who wasn't confronting a suspect, wasn't doing anything in terms of his law enforcement duties, he was simply putting gas in his patrol car when a deranged individual, you can't say he was normal, woke up behind him, shot him three times in the back, and then another 12 times while he was laying on the ground, the officer in Las Vegas recently was sitting at a stoplight, not confronting a suspect, doing anything regards, and was shot, this is happening far too frequently in this community, I think for those of us that understand the vital role that law enforcement plays, it's time that we stand up and, and support law enforcement, when many cases, a person is killed, and some folks think it was unjustifiable, they're marching in the streets, but when police officers are killed, you don't see the same response, and I think maybe a lot of us should be more vocal in addressing that aspect of it, because as been said by a number of folks, particularly in law enforcement, all lives matter, black lives, white lives, Hispanic lives, and police officers' lives, and there should be an understanding of that, that there's no justification for what's going on and what's been happening, and I think it's important to speak out on behalf of the law enforcement community, one of the, I think, important elements is the number of officers that have been killed in the line of duty, and Chief McClure has provided the Officer Down Memorial Page, and Chief, I'd like you to address it, it's a little difficult for me because I do tend to get emotional when I say you have a close family member in law enforcement, and you think that his name could be on this list, so Chief, if you would.
I provided a document from a website that is the Officer Down Memorial Page that lists every officer that's killed in the line of duty and how they were killed in the line of duty, and I think what we're seeing is more officers are being, we used to always say the officers killed in the line of duty, majority of them were killed in car accidents, but that trend has changed, and it's officers that are responding to domestic violence calls that are being shot by somebody, responding to just routine calls and being shot and killed, not to mention traffic stops, or as you mentioned, sitting at a stoplight, putting gas in your car, and I said earlier, I've been in this business a very long time, and I cannot remember ever a time that things have been this bad when it comes to law enforcement, and the fact that so many refuse to take personal responsibility for their actions, and how certain things become as a result of their own actions, and the blame being turned around and put on the police is very tough, and I think, as, I got a phone call today from a colleague who asked me this question, have you ever seen such a lack of support from Sacramento and Washington DC that we're seeing today, and I don't know that I can remember a time that we were this unsupported by not only our statewide or federal politicians for what we do on a daily basis, and what you mentioned earlier, the scrutiny on law enforcement, I ask anybody to come sit with me as I review disciplinary documents daily, based on just the fact that somebody called and said I didn't like the way somebody looked at me, we, we look into that, we're required to look into that, so we do do that, so for anybody to say that we're not scrutinized, I'd like to find a profession that's less scrutinized than we are, so with that being said, I just think it's, it's, the best I can say, it's open season on law enforcement, I think that there are a lot of people that are taking advantage of that, especially with the ability to pass things like Prop 47, which I believe this community right here was misinformed on what Prop 47 actually did, it's having a devastating effect on crime across LA County for the first time, and it's very hard for me because I've reduced crime in this city every year since I've been here, it's the first year we will have an increase in crime, and I can attribute that 100% to Prop 47 and what it has done, and the tools it has taken away from law enforcement, and I also caution you that there is a bill by one of our local legislators to completely eliminate the use of asset forfeiture funds, and if that bill is not vetoed by the governor after it is passed the assembly, then that's about $2 million that gets taken away from your local police department that's used for legal funds, we are, for legal reasons, we are audited yearly, we ensure that we're audited, we go by the rules when we utilize that money, but that money is utilized for things such as the overtime that keeps police officers on the streets, that will, that is something that this community will lose, and if something's not done, if we don't turn the tide, it'll be a very tough time, not just for law enforcement, but it'll be a tough time for our communities because we don't have the tools to stop what's going on anymore, they're stripping us, stripping it from us, and it's going to be felt by the people who live here, and that's the saddest part about everything that's being done.
Thank you, Chief, you know, there was a phrase coined, the thin blue line, and really, that's a very inappropriate characterization of the vital role that police officers play in keeping us safe, there are very few officers in comparison to the number in our population, 900,000 police officers in this country of 350 million people, they make 10 million contacts a year, and so very few of them, there is any improper conduct, and to see what's, how law enforcement is in character, I should, should be a vital concern to all of us because I wanted to make sure that we understand the role that law enforcement plays in keeping us and our families, our community, safe, you know, someone commentator was talking, you know, if you want to think about something, think about if there were no police officers, not for a month or a week, but for 24 hours, what would happen in this country, what would happen with the criminal element that's out there on a regular basis, and what would happen to us and our families, and that's why we owe such a great debt, and I wanted to make sure that we understand the vital role that the Montebello Police Department, the men and women of our department, play in keeping this community safe, but I think it's more important at this time for us to step up, not only as a community, but to urge other communities, you know, anytime a movement starts, it has to start somewhere, and I think this is as good a place as any to step up and say, let's start with a resolution to support law enforcement, to support the men and women that put their life on the line every day, literally, it's not a situation when you see the number of officers that were killed in the line of duty in the past year, 83, seven in the last two weeks, 24 so far this year, and God willing, you know, I pray every day, not only for my son's safety, but all the men and women in law enforcement, that they, good Lord keeps them safe, and they come home to their families, but I think it's time really to step up, and I hope my colleagues will support me, not only in a resolution from the city of Montebello, showing our support for law enforcement, and the gratitude that we have for what they do for us, but to urge all our surrounding communities, and hope we can get a movement going that will spread, it is starting to come up in a number of areas, 11,000 people turned out for the funeral that... 11,000 people turned out for the funeral of that officer in Texas. There were thousands for the officer that was killed in Illinois. People are starting to understand that what we've referred sometimes as a silent majority has to not be silent any longer in this instance because, as the chief said, these, in all the years he's been in law enforcement, he's never seen a circumstance like we're seeing today. And I think it's also important that we convey that to our state and federal officials, that we expect them to step up and support law enforcement in the same manner as we as a community do. So I would ask my colleagues if they would support me in this effort, and let's see what we can do to get some movement started here, and starting with our community. And God willing, it'll spread to other cities and urge our other surrounding communities and see if we can get something going to counter what's going on because we need to address this issue, and it needs to be addressed very aggressively.
I concur with every single statement that you have made on this issue because I look at it as it's a, it's an effort to discredit the very same people that all Americans expect to be available when they're in time of need, a police officer. When somebody's in danger, they expect a police officer there. But sometimes people cross the line, and it takes maybe more than one police officer to apprehend somebody, and all of a sudden the situation changes, and they turn it on the police officer. I agree wholeheartedly that we should pass a resolution supporting law enforcement. And I'm gravely concerned with the effort made by members of the state legislature to take away the asset forfeiture program. That is a very vital tool for law enforcement to ensure public safety, and it helps us fiscally to address that. Here is, that is a perfect example of how you turn a problem into a good thing. You're arresting drug dealers, and you're taking money away from drug dealers, and you're putting it into law enforcement to prevent more drug dealing and more drugs from being on the streets, whether it be here in Montebello or a surrounding city. This is very important. Proposition 47, boy, was that a, did that bamboozle everybody in California. Property crimes are up over 100% as, according to LAPD. You can't leave anything of any value in sight in your car because they're breaking in, they're smashing windows and grabbing whatever's in the car. And I am so frustrated with that because it seems like Sacramento, Sacramento puts restrictions on us, and then they take every tool away from us. But with Proposition 47, what they did is, that became a serious threat to all people in California, you know? And I'm, I think that we have to stand, obviously with law enforcement, to ensure that they are not being attacked. And they are. There's this, there's this, there's this movement of attacking law enforcement. And I, it, it really upsets me because this is what everybody wants, right? They all want to live in a safe community. Who promotes a safe community? Law enforcement. And now they want to restrict their abilities. I can't, I can't agree with that. So I'm in concurrence with Councilmember Molinari on this issue. And what I'd like to do is, if there's consensus, of course, first is your, your motion, and second is if we can have our police chief bring us back, bring back some language on the asset forfeiture issue because I will, I will ask my colleagues this evening, if we can, to not only pass a resolution supporting law enforcement, but also opposing any effort to take away asset forfeiture.
That should be conveyed to other communities, hopefully there.
Absolutely.
Where Chief McClure is, I'm sure the Chief's Association's talking about it, but sometimes it's important to convey to our, all our neighboring communities that they need to do it through ICA and in contract cities that we
Yeah.
All make an effort to have the governor veto that legislation.
Absolutely.
And Mayor, I actually have a question on that. What bill number is that?
It's SB 443.
Say that again?
SB 443.
Who's the author?
And who's sponsoring it?
It is, the lead author is Holly Mitchell, co-sponsored by Christina Garcia.
You're kidding.
Nice to know our local representative is sponsoring that. Any other comments?
I do.
Yes, please.
You know, it's, I think it's wonderful, and I definitely concur as well. On Saturday, the 29th, as the chief is aware, and many people are aware, I witnessed my car destroyed by somebody on meth. Couldn't confront them, couldn't do anything, actually. You know, he threw his bicycle at two other vehicles driving by, proceeded to destroy the kitchen window of a neighbor, and then threw his bike, well, destroyed the car, but then threw the bike at the officers, which I was in shock. And they do put themselves in harm's way, and we, we, we need to support them. And we also need to educate the public on AB 109 and Prop 47 and all the challenges now that we're faced with regard to the realignment. And it just makes me laugh because LA County probation officials were talking about how, you know, they're, they're proud because the jail population has been lowered. So if they're not in the jails, then they're in our streets. It's astounding to me. So all the sentencing for non-serious, non-violent offenders, the sexual offenders, you know, our non-sexual offenders, they're out on our streets because of the overcrowding in the jails. And I really believe the voters were sold an empty bag of goods, and they were misinformed. And I'm going to do my best in Sacramento, when we go for legislative day, to talk about these things. And I know independent cities, along with contract cities, are going to try to do our best to try to see how we can change that realignment that is, is affecting so many people in so many communities. So I just, I feel, I feel that a lot of it is going to be outreach, educating the public, and so we can get these bills knocked off that are trying to take away our asset forfeiture money and keep these offenders incarcerated for, for the length of time, instead of having them go be jailed at home or have an ankle bracelet. And just, the court system is very frustrating, I'm sure, for law enforcement as well. You know, they get a slap on the wrist. So I want to play my part in advocating for this for the City of Montebello and for all communities.
Okay, well, it looks like you have consensus, Councilmember Molinari?
Yes, thank you.
And we'll ask the chief to come back with language, and we can agendize it on our next council meeting, both items. Okay, great. Mr. Molinar, are you, is that complete your comments?
Yes, just one final
Sure.
Comment because I think it's very appropriate. Officer Down Memorial Page was formed by a former police officer, Chris Koesgriff. But here's a statement on here I think that's important to read, and it basically says, "When a police officer is killed, it is not an agency that loses an officer, it's an entire nation." And I think that's a very appropriate way to characterize the loss and the death of a police officer, and particularly in circumstances going on today. So Chief, know that we have our full support, and I'm sure the support of this community. And I think we should really express more often the debt that we owe to your officers. I tell you, like, when you see a military person, when you see an officer out there in the street, take a moment to say thank you for what you do for us because it is a very vital role that they play. But the situation is such now that I think it's time to step up, and I'd like my colleagues for their support. Chief, if you have a direction, hopefully at the next meeting, you can bring back two resolutions that will address these issues that are so vitally important to the law enforcement community.
If I could just say thank you to each and every one of you from the Montebello Police Department and all of my colleagues for being at the forefront and stepping forward, and somebody actually saying it's time to say stop, enough is enough, and we're doing something. So to all of you, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Good job. Mayor Protem Art Bras, it's your turn.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. And thank you, Chief, and Mr. Molinar, for bringing that up to the forefront and looking forward to moving that resolution forward. I am, I'm hoping to get consensus here and to direct staff to prepare a report, a city council report, and to see the feasibility or feasibility study as to how much it will cost to turn the old handball courts at City Park into a dog park. The need for dog parks now has become, you know, our furry friends need a place to run and take care of business and do their thing that they need to do. Someone who spends a lot of time at parks right now because of my children being involved in youth sports, there's not a shortage of people out there walking their dogs. And I thought, while I was at City Park for a, for one of my son's practices, I did see a lot of people walk, especially right now because the weather's pretty hot, and I know we're getting into the winter months, but for the most part, it's pretty pleasant here in Southern California. And being that, that area there, we constantly get complaints from residents that live there on Park Avenue about the handball courts being used for one thing or another. I mean, you name it, from kids riding the bike to the skateboarders using that instead of the skate park. And so there's just constantly a lot of complaints happening there at, at that area there. And I thought, well, it's just sitting there, not doing anything. So I just thought maybe if we can kind of look into it, especially now with City Ventures buying a property there, where more condos are going to be coming in on Olympic and Greenwood, and being that Olympic Boulevard sustains nothing but either duplexes or apartments, all those people walk their dogs. So I just thought maybe at City Park, if we can look into fencing in that area, how much it will cost to remove the concrete being in the Siaka, as your commissioner, your representative, I know there's grants out there. Seems now it's getting more and more popular with cities to do a dog park. I just did a quick search on Yahoo Locals here, and I still use Yahoo instead of Google. So I just did dog parks in the neighboring communities. There's, I just popped up right away, highlighted all of them. I found five, and I'll just name them briefly. We have Michigan Park in the City of Whittier, they have a dog park, Southgate Dog Park, which is obviously in Southgate, and then we have Sierra Vista Park, which is in Monterey Park, Heritage Park in Santa Fe Springs, and Rio San Gabriel Park, which is in the City of Downey. And also in, going back and forth with several residents on social media, I know there's definitely a need, and the community wants it. And I know there's been, in the past, I believe, Mr. Molinari, you, you brought this up, I think maybe trying to get a dog park at a certain different area. I believe it was down on Lincoln, I think, is that where you were looking at, at that time?
Edison Company Power Lines off of Garfield Avenue.
There we go, that's right.
We tried that.
That's right. Yeah, yeah. And I know, in talking to Ms. Cortez in the past, there's been some interest also maybe looking at Hendry Acuna Park. But, so there's just different areas where we can definitely do them. I just thought because that is just a spot there. And I would imagine they would bring more and more of a positive crowd to City Park since we do have a lot of complaints about, you know, just people up to no good there at City Park. But overall, it's a pretty pleasant experience there. But everyone wants to know why. I think with people who bring their dogs there who are responsible pet owners, it will bring a different type of element and environment to that area of the park. And I would just like to get staff, a staff report as to how much it will cost and see what we're looking at there. But at this point, I'm open for any comments or suggestions from my colleagues in the city council.
I actually agendized this issue a while back, a couple of years ago, and we tried very hard to get the portion of the Edison easement over on Garfield, convert that to a dog park. But the Edison Company would not approve the use. And it puzzled me because we literally weren't going to do anything with that property, but just designate it for people to have their dogs over there, with not a single wall going up or a structure going up. And they said absolutely no. So at this point, we should explore the opportunity that you raised with the handball courts, if possible. I obviously have a report furnished by Public Works. Also, we can also consider somewhere near Lincoln and La Merced, there's an area there that is, was formerly a sports field. It's kind of dry right now, but I don't know if we can use that considering what just happened. But I'm, I'm in agreeance with you. There is a demand for a dog park here in Montebello. We also have the, the Dutcher Tot Lot on Garfield next to the golf course. That may also be another location.
Mayor, if I may, the last time the mayor brought this up, we did meet with our grant writing firm, California Consulting. We have not been able to find a grant so far for a dog park. We did evaluate the Dutcher Lot, except that it's a steep slope, and there's a big rock boulder there. So I mean, we, so we did look at that, but we can certainly get cost estimates
Yeah.
About the handball court.
Yeah, and we really opened, opened it up. I just thought, like, as I mentioned, I said as the commissioner, represent the City of Montebello and Siaka, which is our animal control. And I was listening to Louis Marquez, who's the representative for the City of Downey, and he invited us to the grand opening for their dog park. And they got sponsors like Petco that were coming in, and they would donate. And being that we have, you know, a Petco here, I mean, there's different pet stores that would donate, you know, some sort of playground for dogs. I mean, if we can just fence it in, I mean, the cost was very minimal. But definitely the need is there. So I just thought maybe if we can start looking into it, how much it will cost, maybe not necessarily in this budget, but maybe hopefully we can, if it's not too much. But we start somewhere. And right now, I'd like to start at least, being that it's there at City Park, it's our property, it's not Edison, or it's not somebody that we need to ask. I mean, it's just sitting there with a big slab of concrete, and nothing's happening there. So other than getting complaints about what other people do in that slab of concrete, I'd rather turn that into a, into a dog park. And like I said, bring a different type of element into the community and, you know, make the park a little more enjoyable than what it is now. So, but certainly grants will be definitely something that we can look into.
I have a comment.
Sure.
I'm all for dog parks. I just would like to add that if we are going to consider that area, we consider the proximity of the swimming pool, which is literally adjacent to those courts and the fecal matter of animals, or we also evaluate the potential liability for off-leash or on-leash. I don't know how we're going to designate it, but that if we do that analysis, that we consider those things as well.
Of course, absolutely. That's a good point you brought up. Thank you.
Okay, so Public Works, you'll have to come back with a brief report on whether or not this can or cannot be done?
Yes, we'll do.
Okay, great. Any other comments?
Oh, no, that is it, Your Honor. Thank you very much to my colleagues for supporting me on consensus on this. And my next item, Your Honor, it's actually going to be very brief. I just wanted to get from Mr. Batson, if those of you that remember earlier this year, the, cohesively here in the Montebello City Council, we appropriated funds to basically redo Grand Ray. Part of a grant that we got from Ms. Gloria Molina, we were able to redo the restrooms. But another, one of the big complaints that we get at the park is that the fields are very uneven, and they're unsafe for our children. Because, you know, a lot of times, a lot of the injuries that those kids get, you'd be surprised, it's not necessarily getting hit by a ball or a baseball bat. It's when they're trying to run chase after a ball, they twist their ankle because the field levels are so uneven. But I think part of the money that we were able to allocate, we were going to regrade the fields, we were going to put up scoreboards, also another safety measure, instead of the kids just warming up anywhere in the park, we were able to put at least now temporarily bullpens. That way, the kids, when they warm up before a game or as they're warming up to pitch during a game, they're not pitching as the, on the walkway, going back and forth as people are walking, you know, the other way. So I just wanted to get more, a timeline as to when all this is going to get done because obviously we're getting into the winter months. And of course, not that meteorologists are never wrong, but, you know, they're predicting a pretty wet winter if this El Nino thing happens. So we're going to be looking into some wet months. So baseball season's basically around the corner now. So I just wanted to get a timeline as to where we are at, and is this going to be ready by opening day in March of 2016, which is pretty much in six months?
Yes, the proposed improvements to the fields at Grand Ray will begin first with, we have to remove a couple of trees, one of them on Field 5, which is dead, and then one next to Field which is dead, and then one, uh, next to Field Three. We'll begin in, in, uh, November 16. Um, on November 23rd, we'll do the bullpens, basically start the bullpens on Field One, Two, Three, and Four, uh, and then also a dugout roof for Field Five. Um, December 14th, we'll do the grading of Field Three, which is the one that is worst condition as far as the, uh, the infield versus the outfield. Um, January 4th, we'll install two lights at, on Field Five to be able to, uh, use that at night, but those will be outside the sound drain area, so they'll, the lights will be up, above, so they won't pose any problem. Um, January 18th, we'll begin the installation of the scoreboards. Um, we feel that, um, in meeting with baseball and softball, uh, but especially with baseball, that, um, the funding that city council appropriated will be enough to actually purchase three scoreboards for Field Two, Three, and Four. Um, we're looking at the, using LED lights and also for it to be solar power, you know, so that will, will cut down on the amount of, um, disruption around the fields that we have to do to excavate and put an electrical, uh, conduit. And then on January 26th, 25th, I'm sorry, we'll do the laser grading of Field One, Two, Four, and Five to complete all five fields. Um, I believe this schedule, again, we met with baseball and softball organization to develop the, um, schedule and kind of work it backwards, so to allow to, in February, when, uh, practice start, and in March, when the season begin, we'll be ready for that.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Danilo, now, being that, uh, we're, it seems like we're lasering the fields and, uh, and I, that's basically leveling the fields for, because I, I learned that, uh, term not too long ago, and, uh, but I know, I remember when I, when you and I were talking about it with the commissioner of baseball, when we were out there on the field, uh, I, I think you had mentioned that, uh, they needed to stay off the fields for at least two months?
Yes, correct, I'm, I'm sorry, yes. When we do Field Three especially, uh, because, um, there will be some grading and removal of some of the, uh, outfield, um, grass, the field will need to be enclosed, fenced in basically for 30 days, uh, not to be used to allow the grass to take root.
Right. And that Field Number Three, you said it's gonna start getting lasered, when?
Um, December 14th.
Okay, so we'll have plenty of time for opening day in March.
Yeah, and, and that's also, um, I believe is a week after the tot, um, children toy drive, so we wanted to do it, make sure.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
That happens before we close the field.
All right, thank you very much, Danilo, you know, I've been, uh, kind of, uh, bugging you on this from, every time I see you, I just keep asking you how my field's coming along, how the field's coming along, but, uh, I wanna thank you for your hard work on this, I know you've been very diligent in keeping me informed and sending me emails, and I, I, I know I can pester you sometimes when it comes to it, but I just really wanted to let the community, because I keep getting asked about it, especially with the time I spend out and, and be, in the park, um, but I just, now in a public forum, I just wanted the community to hear what I've been hearing, uh, and I feel very, very happy that we are going to be able to have all this ready to show off on opening day because I think the community not only deserves it, you know, children deserve it, but, uh, I think, uh, they're, they're gonna be, they're gonna enjoy it. So thank you very much for your hard work on this.
Thank you.
And that, that's all for my comments, uh, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you, now we'll move on to Councilmember Romero.
And before that, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, we do have.
I'm gonna table my items.
Oh, you are?
To the next meeting, yes, please, or hold them over.
Okay, so, uh, well, the speaker was no longer here anyways. Oh, there, I'm sorry, I was looking towards the back. Mr. Popoff, can you be patient, wait till it's agendized again?
Sure, why not?
Okay, thank you so much. And with that, um, if, if, if I may, uh, ask my colleagues if we can, uh, adjourn today's meeting, uh, in my grandfather's memory, as today we marked the 15th anniversary, uh, my grandfather, who, uh, was a genocide survivor and a 44-year resident of Montebello. So.
Your Honor, adjourned in the honor of the, in memory of the 83 law enforcement officers that have died so far in the line of duty this year.
Absolutely, and in memory of all the, uh, law enforcement, uh, officers who have died, uh, year-to-date, it's unfortunate that, uh, there's such a high, uh, statistic like that. So just a moment of silence for everybody, please. Thank you, now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I'll make a motion?
Second.
Okay, and, uh, that's ordered. Good night, everybody.